Good morning. Want to call to order the September 26th Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting and want to welcome all of our guests and the folks in the audience this morning. I know we have several presentations. We'll get a chance to recognize some folks and share some thoughts around some very important people. And we're going to get to that in just a moment, but before that, we have a few housekeeping items, including calling to meet in order, calling the roll, establish a quorum, and then a few announcements, and we'll dive right into the agenda. So with that, Ms. Evans, I'll turn to you, make the announcements, and call the roll, please.
Okay. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, September 29th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices.
Okay, thank you. And I don't have anyone to sign up on any of the items that are on the agenda, so if you are here and wish to address the board on any consent matter, or not on the agenda, would ask you, please fill out a speaker form so we can get that noted when we get to those items. So with that, I'd ask you to join me in a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Flow, any items to be continued? And we do expect Supervisor Peters to join us fairly shortly.
Okay, so you do have consent matters, items 1 through 43, and I don't have any notes.
Okay, all right. Let me turn my colleagues in, see if they have any items they wish to pull off the consent counter. Mr. Serna? Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Frost? Okay. I just had comments on a couple of items, if I could. Item 20.
Item number 20, authority to enter into an agreement with Volunteers of America for supportive services, housing assistance, and the continued operation in the Mather Community Campus Transitional Housing Program.
Okay, just a brief comment, certainly supportive of this item, and I know that this board certainly has worked very hard to find the funding to support this program at Mather. I did talk with the county executive, I think there was a note sent out by Mr. Lake a little earlier this morning in response to the clean and sober policies for this program. I know that initially, when the board adopted it, nearly 20 years ago now, there were certain requirements, not just for entry, but certainly for the ongoing participation in the program. Obviously, it's been a very successful program. Talking just before the meeting with Mr. Gill and Mr. Lake, I think it's important to get an understanding, you know, what, going forward, obviously, we've made a strong commitment with county general funds to this program, to get an understanding from VOA, but also from county staff as to what the expectations are for, one, for entry, but secondly, for participation in the program at Mather. And there were some requirements. We moved away from those because of federal funding sources in the way the money was flowing, but I want to be sure that this board, and again, we may want to revisit it as a board to reflect, you know, current approaches, but that question's been one that's been out there for a couple of years, and I know, Mr. Gill, you indicated, we'll try to arrange a meeting with VOA and county staff, I believe, and...
That's correct.
Okay. And then we can report back to, I think it would be important to report back to the board so there's a clear understanding by all involved, so...
We'll do that.
Okay, thanks. And then just the other item was on item 30.
Item 30, accept GSA responsibility for overlap areas in the Sacramento County in the event that the alternative submittal is withdrawn or denied.
Okay. The, we had a discussion about this a few weeks back, and we're now going to notify the Department of Water Resources that for the areas where there's some overlap that the county, in the event that the alternative plan that was submitted by the central groundwater entity, that we would, at least in the intervening period, stand in so that the state wouldn't come in and usurp any local authorities. I want to just, I think it's important, though, Mr. Gill, that in addition to this board report, that ongoing status report to the Board of Supervisors is very important, and we know we've had some differences with some of the entities, and there's been a lot of work with county staff and the water forum to address some of the differences, but I think it's important to continue to keep the board updated as relates to this entire matter, so. Okay, that's all I had. All right. And I don't have anyone signed, so anyone who should address any items on the consent counter? If not, then motion would be in order.
Move approval of consent.
Okay. I have a motion the chair would second to approve the consent calendar with the items as noted. So if nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, very good. Thanks. Now we have some presentations.
Yes, we do. Okay.
I think we're going to do them in a certain order.
We're going to take item 42, and then after item 42, we'll jump to item 45.
Okay.
So for item 42, it's the presentation of resolution congratulating the Chinese-American Council of Sacramento on its 30th anniversary.
Okay. I think Brenda Fawn and Ms. Lummer, hold it right here in front. Okay, good.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a few words, let you say a few words as well, so. Well, I'm pleased on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we just adopted a resolution that congratulates the Chinese-American Council of Sacramento on its 30th anniversary, and I know you've got some activities planned over the course of the next few weeks to recognize some of the outstanding members of the Asian Pacific Islander community, as you have for many years. Now, I would just note that the resolution does point out that the council was founded, as noted, three decades ago, but with the guidance and direction of Frank Phat and a number of other distinguished leaders within the Chinese-American community, and for the past 30 years has provided a strong advocacy, a strong voice for Asian Americans in Sacramento, but also on issues of importance to this community, but certainly to our state and nation. And we're really pleased that, again, this organization has thrived over the past 30 years, and we commemorate the 30th anniversary, and certainly want to wish the best to the honorees this year. They join a long list of other folks who have received not only the Founder's Award, but other awards for their contributions to advancement of, I think, certainly social justice and civil rights, and certainly matters of importance to all of us, but certainly to the Asian American community here in Sacramento. And I think your Gold Mountain Celebration is your annual event when you come together and bring folks together to celebrate. And so, the Board of Supervisors does congratulate the council on its 30th anniversary, present this to you on behalf of your entire organization, and we offer our commendation, and hopefully, 30 years from now, we'll be celebrating your 60th, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, and then with...
You bet. On behalf of the Chinese-American Council of Sacramento and also the CACS Foundation, we thank the Chair, Mr. Don Natoli, also the Directors of the Sacramento County Board of Directors for this recognition for the 30-year anniversary of the Chinese-American Council of Sacramento. Mr. Frank Phat would have been very proud of his accomplishment. He was a founder of the Pacific Rim Street Fest, as well as activities promoting social justice and a better leadership for the Asian Americans in the greater Sacramento area. With this, we thank you very much for your recognition, and also wishing you for participation in our 30-year anniversary at the Asian Sports Foundation on October 14. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, so we are moving to item 45. We're going out of order. This is the presentation of resolution commending Dr. Stuart Guarini for heroic assistance on the American River Parkway.
Okay, well, we have a number of folks here to speak and part of a presentation, and I would just note that we have a prescribed order, and I see certainly Mr. Truitt stepping to the podium, and we're going to recognize Mr. Guarini today and some of the folks that he assisted on the Parkway. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Warren. We'll move down through it. We'll have a presentation from Mr. Guarini here in a moment, so. Warren, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Natoli and Supervisors. As a personal friend of Stuart Guarini and representing Save the American River Association today, I'm pleased to participate in the formal honoring of Dr. Stuart Guarini. For the bravery and rapid response he displayed reacting to two back-to-back attacks by a pit bull and two separate women and their respective dogs in William Pond Park on July 19th of this year. Stuart, also known as the Mayor of the Parkway by many, did not hesitate to immediately respond to calls for help and was ultimately successful in separating the attacking pit bull from the women, Jerry Bigelow and Robin Gilmore, and their dogs, likely saving the lives of one or more of them. Stuart is no stranger to life-saving. In 1990, while attending a championship swim meet at Jesuit High School, Stuart witnessed the retrieval of the lifeless body of Joyce Michael Flynn by her husband from the bottom of the pool. Stuart realized she was not breathing and immediately applied 22 minutes of CPR until medical personnel in a lifelight helicopter arrived, saving her life. Dr. Guarini is most deserving of formal county recognition of his extraordinary bravery and unselfish response to persons and animals in danger of serious injury and/or possible death. I am pleased to be present on this occasion. Thank you, Supervisors, for bestowing this well-deserved honor on my friend, Dr. Stuart Guarini.
Thanks, Warren.
There's some others following here.
Yes. Joyce, next?
Hi. I'm Joyce Michael Flynn, and I want to first thank Greg, Luke, and Bill for inviting me to be part of this. For Stuart, there are a lot of people who love you, Stuart, Greg, Luke, and Bill for sure, because he has worked relentlessly on this. Hero as defined, one who shows great courage, a person admired for his achievements and noble qualities. Today, I am so happy and privileged to honor a man who has truly earned that title. There are two people alive today, myself and Jerry, who owe our lives because of the direct intervention and heroism of Stuart Guarini. I thought about what to say, and it's very difficult, not because there's not a lot of wonderful things to say about Stuart, but I'm just limited to three minutes, so I want to move on.
We'll give you a little more if you like so.
Okay, okay. But because, and how do you sing the praises of a man who is literally, "I owe my life to"? There's a book and a movie called The Four Feathers, where a British officer, Harry Farvenham, goes to the Sudan to rescue four of his friends. Harry is assisted by a guide from the Sudan, and Harry asks him, "Why are you helping me?", and the guide simply says, "God put you in my path so I could help you." On July 22nd, 1990, God put Stuart Guarini in my path. He breathed life back into me, providing 22 minutes of CPR. Since that time, I have been able to share the life you gave back to me with my husband of 37 years, Terry Flynn, my daughters, Elizabeth and Catherine, and my son, Keenan. This summer, I was able to be present at the birth of my fifth grandchild. There are no words, not enough thank yous, to measure up to what you have given me and my family. Finally, we all know you're a smart man, Stuart, but the smartest thing you did was to marry Joan Guarini. Joan is one of the most gracious and brave women I know, so thank you. Thank you both, and thank God for putting Dr. Stuart Guarini in my path.
Good morning. My name is Danielle. I am Jerry Bigelow's daughter. My mom could not be here today.
Could you give her a microphone? We can't hear anything.
Yeah, we'll get you, we'll be handheld, just a second here, Danielle.
That's okay. I actually have a very loud voice. I'll try to speak up and not cry.
There we go.
Okay.
Sadly, my mother's brother passed away, so she is not here today, but she wanted me to be here to speak on her behalf. My statement here today is very similar to Joyce's. Stuart, you are a hero. You are my hero. A hero is someone who acts with courage. On July 19th, you saved my mom and her Australian Shepherd, Gus, from that vicious pit bull attack. I will never forget that evening after the attack, when I was at home at my mom and dad's house, and my mom was sitting in her chair, bandaged up, and she had tears in her eyes, and she said to my teenage son, "I thought we were done for. I thought we were going to die on that bike trail. You saved them." My mom is the backbone of my family. She's a retired nurse who spent her entire career helping others. And Gus, the 12-year-old Australian Shepherd, he's actually a retired search and rescue dog. He is a search and rescue dog for Yosemite and for Placer County. His entire life was dedicated to rescuing hikers and people. And on that, well, and also, if you Google Gus, you will see that there's an article in Backpackers Magazine titled, "Could This Dog Save Your Life?" Ironic, isn't it? On July 19th, without even giving it a second thought, you courageously put yourself in danger to save my mom and to save Gus, and for that, we are forever grateful. You are my hero. You are my family's hero. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And now, I'd like to introduce Robin Gilmore, who I also believe thinks you are her hero as well.
Thank you to the board for allowing us to be here. I feel really weird with my back to you.
You can turn this way if it's easier.
Okay.
You can come over.
Yeah, come around if you want, yeah.
Great. Okay. My name is Robin Gilmore. On July 19th of this year, my dog Maggie and I were the second ones attacked by two vicious dogs after an initial attack on Jerry Bigelow and her dog Gus at the William Pond area of the American River Parkway. When something sudden and traumatic happens, I've heard people that have been involved often say they don't remember much about the episode, but I remember a great deal of mine. I remember thinking what a great day it was. I remember suddenly seeing the dogs running toward me. I remember they didn't stop when I yelled at them, and I remember they kept coming. They attacked my dog, all 27 pounds of her. These are two 85-pound dogs. I remember the sense of total helplessness and impending doom, and thinking that this great day was not going to end well at all. I remember just yelling at the top of my lungs for someone to help me as I lay down on top of my dog to protect her. And the best thing I remember is that miraculously, someone heard me and chose to respond seemingly within seconds. I remember the sounds of someone running toward me, someone cursing at the dogs, and I remember those curse words, but I won't repeat them. And then that's someone kicking one of the dogs off my dog. I remember getting up with not one scratch and being told to walk up the path as 911 had been called, but I don't remember if I thanked that man or not. Who was he? And who does that? Who runs towards two vicious dogs? I know he's here today, and this is my opportunity to publicly thank him for putting his own health in serious jeopardy to come to the aid of his stranger and her dog. The two people that spoke in front of me have already used the definition of hero. Mine's out of Webster's Dictionary. I'm going to repeat it again because it's worth repeating. It's one that shows great courage and is regarded as a role model or an ideal. To me, it is simply a person that puts himself in harm's way to help someone else. Stuart Guarini, you are that definition. What you did should be held up as an ideal and a standard for others to emulate. To the rest of you, if there's a takeaway in this, remember to be there for someone in need, in whatever capacity that involves, large or small. You never know when a great day can suddenly go bad. If it hadn't been for the Mayor of the American River Parkway, my great day could have ended up very badly indeed. Mr. Guarini, I will forever remember your selfless act of courage towards me and my dog on July 19th, 2017. So on behalf of Maggie and I, I say with heartfelt and lasting appreciation, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Stuart, we're going to invite you to the podium if you would be so kind to join me.
Hey.
We're going to give you a chance to say a few words.
And so, let me do the presentation, and then I'm going to let you take it from there. So, I think the words certainly embodied in the resolution we have this morning were said very eloquently, very heartfelt, and I think with tremendous amount of appreciation and love, and I think, again, tremendous feelings for your intervention in situations that could have been very, very tragic. And to hear from folks, you know, about, again, your ability to, in the situation, to act very quickly, but certainly to intervene to save lives and more tragic outcomes is, it really is, I think, a portrayal of someone who is a hero, may not, you know, I mean, which you start out to be, but obviously, folks viewing that way, view you in that way. And so, I'm not going to go through all the wherases because it's been much better said, but I think important to note that individuals who you may or may not have known were in need of assistance and help, and you acted quickly, saved lives, and saved very tragic circumstances from happening, and that's, again, your humanity, but I think your ability to respond quickly and your concern for others, and so, you're, you know, in peril to yourself. I mean, that's, I think, also noted, so certainly as Joyce and those that spoke on behalf of Jerry spoke here this morning, again, is with deep appreciation. And so, the community recognizes you for that, and certainly, your good friend Greg Lukembil had a hand in this. I want to note that he was very instrumental in, I think, calling attention not only to your efforts, which were reported in the news, but I think to why we're here today. And so, I'm just going to conclude with the now there for, which says that this board of supervisors, on behalf of the people of Sacramento County, we want to honor and certainly commend you, Stuart, for your heroic and selfless life-saving efforts while helping preserve and certainly protect the safety and sanctity of both the users, but certainly the Parkway itself, and for your concern for other people and their pets and animals. And today, in recognition of that, this day, September 26th, 2017, we are going to proclaim this day a Stuart Guarini Day in Sacramento County.
You got your own day, buddy. So, whether that's Stuart or you, welcome to add some words.
Thank you very much. I'm really speechless, and...
I know Stuart wants to thank you all for this honor. He truly is my hero as well, and I'm honored to be married to a courageous man who always knows the right thing to do. Thank you.
And again, in a few words, you certainly said a lot. I think, obviously, the emotions in this room run pretty high, but for a good reason. There are a lot of love and respect and thankfulness, and so, we, a great deal of appreciation, Stuart. Thank you so much. And again, enjoy the rest of the day. It's Stuart Guarini Day in Sacramento County. Okay, Madam Clerk, we're going to recognize another individual as well, so.
Yes.
Call the next item, please.
Lovely day today. Okay, so, item 43 is the presentation of resolution in memory of Michael Turner.
Okay, I'm going to invite Michael Morris to come forward, and I know we have friends and family members of Michael, and we have a presentation, and we'll start with Mr. Morris, and I think we have a couple of other speakers as well, and then we'll certainly invite anyone else who would like to weigh in to do so also. Mike?
Good morning, Chair Natoli and members of the board, and thank you so much for the opportunity to honor Mike Turner, a very special employee who passed away earlier this month. Mike was a respected 43-year employee of Sacramento County. He started at the county in 1974 as an administrative student trainee in the Public Works Department, and over the years, he progressed through the ranks to become the chief of our real estate division. Mike was a special individual, whether he was negotiating convoluted real estate contracts and Supervisor Natoli, you may remember one or two of those, or coaching his staff through the complexities of real estate law. Mike was a dedicated leader and mentor. And Mike loved to travel. Even at a very young age, he was an avid traveler and sports enthusiast, whether it was riding the bike trails. I want to make sure we see all these. Or traveling in the lap of luxury. Now, be it known that that was a cardinal rule of Mike Turner, is he would never travel in a pedicab that did not match his shoes. And Mike loved spending time with his family. He spent many weekends up in the mountains biking, hiking, and skiing with his wife, Dorothy. But Mike also loved his job, and he loved his staff. Heck, you would even, you would even find him cooking breakfast for them occasionally. And the only thing that we found that Mike really couldn't do was cut cake. And you kind of see this little mess over here, and you can kind of even see it in his face. He said, "Yeah, yeah, I know, just, you'll love it. Eat it, just, you'll like it." Right now, I'd like to invite, for another perspective on, from one of Mike's coworkers, I'd like to introduce John Rocha, who's the, our leasing section manager. Mike, or John?
Thanks, Mike. Good morning, John.
Thank you, Mike. Good morning, board members. My name is John Rocha, and I've been a member of the county of Sacramento for 12 years. So, I've had the privilege of working with Michael Turner for the last 12 years. As you may deduce, at 43 years with the county, he certainly was a dedicated, knowledgeable, and supremely experienced member of the county. But what you may not know is he balanced his leadership with a playful side and demeanor with a great sense of humor, and so, if you don't mind, I'd like to recount a story to that. And I'm of Portuguese descent, and a few years ago, Portugal was playing in an international soccer tournament, and they were doing quite well, to the point where I may or may not have been walking around the office with a little extra pep in my step. And so, ultimately, Portugal was bested, and Spain won it all. So, when I returned to work, I find this very large Spanish flag hung on the outside of my cubicle as a greeting and a welcome back, and so, I knew that wherever Michael Turner was at that particular moment, he was having a hearty laugh. That particular flag stayed up on my cubicle for a good two weeks, so he milked it for all that it was worth. And also, as a balance to that playful side, he was incredibly knowledgeable. I mean, the right-of-way experiences that this gentleman had gained over a 43-year career, I mean, you can only imagine. Taking a drive with him, he would illustrate the various corners and intersections and roadways that he had a hand in beautifying. And so, although we may have lost a very valued member of our staff, I believe that his impact with the county will continue on. And so, with that, we are pleased that his family could join us in our tribute to this special man. But before we present the county resolution, I would like to introduce Michael Patterson. Michael is the professional development chair for the International Right-of-Way Association Sacramento, Chapter Number 27. Michael will present Mike Turner's SRWA professional designation plaque to his family.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Good morning, Michael.
Good morning. As John said, my name is Mike Patterson. I'm the professional development chair of the Sacramento Chapter of the International Right-of-Way Association. I also had the privilege of working with Mike Turner for over 20 years, the past 20 years. I'm an appraiser, and I do a lot of work for Mike and his staff at the county. The International Right-of-Way Association is a professional member organization comprised of nearly 10,000 global infrastructure real estate practitioners from over 15 countries around the world. The IRWA has served professionals who acquire, manage, and transfer land rights needed for building and maintaining energy and transportation infrastructure. The senior right-of-way professional, SRWA, is the most prestigious professional designation granted to those right-of-way professionals who have achieved professional status through experience, education, and examination. While an SRWA professional may be a specialist in one area, they must also be familiar with all disciplines associated with the right-of-way profession. The SRWA designation is the only designation reflecting evidence of professional accomplishment in the right-of-way profession. Mike Turner had recently been notified that he had met the requirements for the designation and was due to receive this plaque next month. Not only was Mike Turner a right-of-way professional that had the experience and education necessary for the designation, but he was also a leader at the County of Sacramento Real Estate Division. Under his leadership, nine other individuals at the real estate division recently achieved this designation, and several others today are still working towards that designation. It's my honor today to present the SRWA plaque and pin to Dorothy Turner and Eric Turner in honor of Mike Turner.
My condolences to both of you, really. Thank you. He's a wonderful person. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for being here this morning.
And at this time, Superintendent Natoli, if you'd join us in presenting the resolution for Mike Turner.
Well, today, this morning, we celebrate certainly the memory, but the service of someone who was a cherished friend, obviously, a husband, a father, a community member who cared very deeply, not only about his work, but obviously about those he loved the most and were closest to him. And I'll just say that in the resolution, we certainly point out some of the achievements and accomplishments throughout his career, but this resolution in the few wheras's contained don't do justice to a 43-year career of public service. And I did have the good fortune over my, I had a little short-term service. I'm nearly 39 years with the county, and so, kind of felt like as a junior to Mike as far as his service, but he really, I think, demonstrated what is best about those who make profession and a life of serving others, certainly in the public realm. And I can tell you that he was always a gentleman. He was professional. He was someone who cared very deeply about doing the work, doing it correctly, but also, he understood not just the, you know, parameters of right-of-ways and public areas and doing the task, but he also had a real heart for, and understanding for what others are going through. You know, the public good and serving that, and, you know, building roads and improving waterways and acquiring sites for public buildings and so forth, all has a very good purpose. But oftentimes, those lands and properties are privately held. In his work, I can tell you on many occasions, and as Mr. Morris alluded to, where he would take the time to sit in someone's kitchen, to go in meetings sometimes with a lot of redundancy, I know certainly in my office, I'm sure with other members of the board, to try to find a solution that obviously represented the public interest, but also would help folks with the fact that they were going to give up a portion of their property in some cases, and give it up in the sense they'd be compensated for it, but also sometimes people's homes were involved. And I had a note from one of his former colleagues in the Department of Transportation who recalled very clearly a situation a number of years ago when there was a widening of Calvine Road, and the house was very close to the road, and the, the two people that resided there, the Roses, were pretty distressed about what that was going to be as far as the impact on their lives. And I know Michael, working with our Department of Transportation, sat in their kitchen. He sat with others, certainly on the county side of the house, and he found a solution that was one that helped them to relocate, preserved, I think, their interests, certainly their stake in the property, but I think their peace of mind. And that was just one example, and I know there were countless times, and I would call him from time to time, and I'm sure others, for advice. And it wasn't always serious business either, because he had that sense of humor. You kind of see it in the, the cutting of the cake there a moment ago, but I know that if you got him to laugh, and I'm sure you've recalled this, Dorothy and Eric, that he would get to kind of giggle, you know? He had that, you know, about him, it was kind of a wry giggle, but it was one where he really did, he had that sense of humor that I think, you know, was part of that inner brightness shining very, very brightly for those that knew and loved him. And so, we honor his memory, and I would just tell you, I was as shocked as anybody when I heard of his passing, and I know that he, we talked from time to time, his father was a longtime county employee, and the legacy in the family, the Turner family, of serving this county and its people, something he was very, very proud of. And I would just say, there's a deep appreciation, certainly in this room, but in the county of Sacramento, and you can both take away with great pride, obviously, that your husband and your father served this community very honorably, very professionally, in a way that I think served the interests of all the folks of the county, but certainly those oftentimes were in distress and certainly in need of guidance and counseling, but all, counseling in the sense that, of how he could go about, you know, working with the county, a big organization, and he was good at what he, what he chose as profession, and I know he rubbed off a lot of goodness on certainly all of us who knew and worked with him. So, on behalf of the county of Sacramento, in a small token of, certainly of our appreciation and memory of a fine, fine man, a gentleman, someone who was good to others, was well-loved, well-respected, and will remain in the hearts and minds of folks in this county, I'm sure, for many generations to come. So, thank you so much. Eric?
Thank you.
It's up to you, Dorothy.
Okay.
If you'd like to.
All I can say is that I know he would completely, he would be very proud of this because he was very proud of all the work he did in the county. He loved it. He, it was his home. And so, he would, this would make him, he'd be very proud of this. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to thank Chairman Natoli and the board for doing this, and the Department of General Services. It means a lot. And, you know, my dad, I think of everybody who knew him and worked with him, knows that he was a hard worker, but he was also a very good father, and just wanted to say thank you guys for honoring his memory.
Thank you.
And then, if anyone else would like to say a few words, I know you have, you have colleagues and friends here, certainly, you need not, but you're welcome to, and this is an opportunity certainly to offer some recognition to the family if you'd like to. So, if there are any colleagues, feel free to come to the podium. I know there's a memorial service this Saturday, I think that was, the announcement was up that showed a moment ago, so people certainly are, I'm sure, invited to attend that and to support the family. But if there's anyone here that would wish to offer a few comments, you're welcome to do so right now. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me speak. Mike was my supervisor for many years, and I enjoyed thoroughly. Mike was my supervisor for many years, and I enjoyed thoroughly working with him, and he was a, as many have said, a gentleman, a scholar, a real knowledgeable person about rights of way, and a good friend and mentor. And I feel very honored that I was able to work with Michael. He certainly, it was so interesting, I was reflecting earlier, that anytime we'd come down here to this building or buildings surrounding, you know, we'd walk from the parking lot, et cetera, and almost every time, there was somebody that he knew, you know, just walking around, and we'd have a conversation for a moment or two, and it was just so nice. He knew people all over the county. It was very helpful. And I, again, so pleased that I was able to work with Mike and have a friend in Mike, and I know how much it would mean to have all of us here in his honor, and that he would be very proud of his accomplishments, and very proud of his family and their accomplishments. And I really would be honored to, you know, call him my friend and call him my mentor and division chief. So thank you, board.
Thank you so much for sharing. Thank you. Okay, then with that, I know we share many good thoughts and much love for the family, Dorothy and Eric, and to your daughter and sister Carrie as well. So we, well, today, we'll also adjourn our meeting in honor of Michael as we adjourn later this afternoon. So we recognize him and we thank him, and we thank you for being here, for all those that were his friends and colleagues here at the county family, but certainly his immediate family. So thank you for being with us here today.
This goes with that, and then that's separate.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, now we are going to item 44, Presentation of Resolution Proclaiming October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Okay, Julie Bernhoff's here.
Good to see you.
We do, as we have for many years, this board is recognizing and proclaiming the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we did so in the adoption of this resolution earlier this morning. And to me, with me is Julie Bernhoff from the Women Escaping the Violent Environment, and I'll ask her in a moment to offer a few words as well. And I think the importance of recognizing the month, but certainly I think the challenges and the problems that affect certainly people who are in relationships where domestic violence is present, the impact upon families, the individuals, children, and it certainly cuts across all socioeconomic, educational, and religious occupational segments of our society. So no one is a stranger to it, and I think the importance, though, of this month is to call attention to the efforts here in this community, certainly by Weave and other organizations that provide support, counseling, a safe place for folks that in large part are women and children escaping this, but I'm sure there are situations where you have men as well. But one of the things that Weave has done, it being now the most long-established and most comprehensive provider of domestic violence services, Sacramento County, over 10,000 crisis calls a year come into Weave, and maybe there's an updated number that relates to that, and they respond to those calls all hours of the day and night, and certainly weekends as well. They also provide more than 19,000 bed nights of confidential emergency shelter for those that are trying to avoid and to get away from the offenders. And have really continued to serve in so many ways the folks who, again, are at great disadvantage, very vulnerable, and Weave is there to support them and has been for many, many years. And want to recognize that work, but certainly call attention to domestic violence, the ability for this community certainly to help folks coping with, you know, situations of assault, domestic violence, and sex trafficking, which we don't tolerate in this community, but we know that it goes on, and we do our best, certainly working in support by this board, of law enforcement, of social service agencies, and certainly our partners in the nonprofit community, to help folks address those situations and to have a better situation in their respective lives. And so we do proclaim the month of October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month here in Sacramento County, encourage people throughout the county to partner with organizations such as Weave and others in working to bring an end, hopefully someday, to domestic violence in our community. So with that, Julie, I'll present this to you.
Thank you.
And thank you again for your organization's service to our community.
Thank you.
Just wanted to very quickly thank the supervisors for your continued support, drawing attention to it, also acknowledging that there may be one month that we issue a resolution for, but you're all very aware, this is 24/7/365, and you have invested in that, and it is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
With that, then we'll move to next portion of the agenda, and we have some timed items. So with that, I'll go ahead and call item 46, please.
Okay, so you are acting as the Sacramento County Tobacco Securitization Corporation for item 46, Approval of Previous Meeting Minutes, Adopt Fiscal Year 2017/18 Budget, and it's the presentation of the Fiscal Year 2016/17 Audited Financial Report.
Good morning, Kristin Yates County Executive's Office. So every year on the first Tuesday in October, the Tobacco Securitization Authority of Northern California and the Tobacco Corporation Board convene to meet the annual meeting, I'm sorry, convene for the annual meeting requirement. Since the board did not have a normal meeting scheduled for the first Tuesday in October, we scheduled these meetings for today, September 26. The Tobacco Authority met this morning, and this item meets the annual requirement for the Tobacco Corporation. So the annual report before you includes information and the following recommendations: Approval of Last Year's Meeting Minutes, The Adoption of the Fiscal Year 17/18 Budget, and a Receive-and-file of the June 30, 2017 Audit. Representatives from Departments, the outside auditor, and myself are here to answer any questions should you have them.
Okay, thanks, Kristin.
You're welcome.
Board members, questions of Kristin on the report? Okay, we have a motion to approve, seconded. Just one question, have we had any success in our outreach to fill the vacancy that's been on the board for now many years, or several years, anyway?
The application request is included in the agenda today, and I have not received any to date, so we're hoping.
Okay, so maybe our county executive did some outreach through...
I've tried.
Have you?
And Flo and I have been working on that as well.
All right, very good, thanks. Okay, nothing further. I don't want to sign to speak on item 47. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For item 47, it's the State of Agriculture in Sacramento County Based on the 2016 Crop and Livestock Report.
All right, invite Julie Jensen. I know we have Bill Burr from the Sacramento County Farm Bureau is here, and I think other members from Julie's office. So it's your opportunity to give us the crop and livestock report, tell us what's going on agriculture in this community, and anything else you want to add. Julie, good morning.
Well, I didn't realize I was going to be here on such an emotional day. I got pretty choked up there. You guys have pretty exciting jobs down here. Well, good morning, supervisors. I'm Julie Jensen, Sacramento County Agricultural Commissioner, and I want to thank you for allowing me to join you this morning and share with you the state of agriculture here in Sacramento County. I'd like to start by thanking you for the support that you've shown for our department, and also for the agricultural industry here in Sacramento County. Although we have come out of the drought, agriculture continues to face challenges, but with your help and support, I'm sure that we will persist in providing Sacramento, California, and the world with the high-quality agricultural commodities that we have provided for many years. So the timing of this report is most appropriate, as we have just completed a week of celebrating our status as farm-to-fork capital. Our department represented Sacramento County in the Farm-to-Fork Festival this past Saturday, and I was just really encouraged to see so many people that are interested in where our food comes from, and also in protecting that source. So as I usually do, I'm going to start with a look back at the past 10 years, just for a little bit of context. So somewhat surprising is the fact that although in the production year of 2016, we were still in the drought, it proved to be our highest-valued agricultural production to date. We actually had $507,064,000 worth of agricultural production. And I'll explain the reason for this a little bit further into my report. So my report today is based on the 2016 Crop and Livestock Report, and you have copies in front of you. The dollar figures are based solely on the farm gate value, and they don't reflect the costs that go into the production of these agricultural commodities. They also don't reflect any of the ancillary economies that are affected by our agriculture, such as processing, transportation, labor, and production inputs. But before I go any further, I'd like to recognize and thank my staff that worked so hard on putting together the 2016 Crop Report, Chris Flores, my chief deputy, Deputy Kevin Martin, and Senior Agricultural and Standards Inspector Laura McCready. They worked really hard on this. Last year, Supervisor Natoli asked that we step up the crop report so that it was more readable and interesting to the public, and I hope that you're happy with the results, and will continue to bring more stories and insight into the people who produce our food. Our leading commodities remain fairly stable, with the exception of nursery stock moving up into the top five and replacing aquaculture, and rice falling out of the top 10 and being replaced by processing tomatoes. Wine grapes continue to rule as king in Sacramento County for the past eight years, and milk continues to hang on as number two. California is the third top-producing state of pears behind Washington and Oregon, and Sacramento County is the top pear-producing county in California. They remain as our third top crop. Then in fourth place, poultry, primarily turkeys, is our fourth-place commodity, and rounding out the top five is nursery stock. It hasn't been in the top five since 2010, due primarily to the slump in building and also new housing. So you would think that the drought would also depress the nursery industry, but the prolonged drought actually encouraged many homeowners to tear out their water-thirsty landscapes and lawns and replace them with xeroscapes, using plants that are much more thrifty with their water requirements. That, together with the slowly recovering home-building industry, has helped the nursery industry return to the top five, and we're glad to see them there. As I mentioned earlier, 2016 saw the highest value in agricultural production in Sacramento history, with an increase of 7.9% over 2015. And as I said, it's somewhat surprising, as 2016 was also our fifth year of drought. And as expected, we did result, this did result in somewhat of a decrease in yield and in production in some of our commodities. So why is our 2016 value higher? Well, the primary answer is grapes, wine grapes. Our top crops' value increased significantly in 2016. We saw increases in acreage, yield, and price, leading to a 44% increase, and this is huge. Because this is our top crop, these increases outweighed the losses that we saw in some of our other commodities. And also, in a drought, growers will often either plant less annual crops or leave annual crop fields fallow so that they can maintain their permanent crops, such as their vineyards and orchards. Finally, our milk value, our milk volume increased just a little bit, but the price also dropped slightly, and so that resulted in an overall decrease of 1%. Also somewhat surprising, after I just said that they protect their permanent crops and let their annual crops kind of go to hell in a drought, we saw an increase of 55% in our veg crops, and processing tomatoes climbed into the top 10, pushing out rice. And I can't tell you why. I've looked and looked, I don't know why, but that's what happened this last year. So although the acreage remained stable and the yield per acre dropped a little bit, the pear value increased slightly, due entirely to an increase in price. Now, unfortunately for walnuts, they had the same issues, where they were stable in acreage and they lost a little bit of yield, but unfortunately for them, the price, the bottom dropped out of the price for them. So they dropped significantly, resulting in an overall loss of 35%. Our livestock overall saw a decrease of 23%, with cattle and calves down 25%. A lot of them were sold off earlier during the drought also, so our numbers were down. Aquaculture was down by 50% due primarily to a decrease in the price of caviar. I don't, I don't know if you remember, last year I told you the price of caviar was very mercurial, and this year proved that because it just sunk. Poultry increased slightly by 2%, and our apiaries increased by 53%, and that's due pretty much to an increase in sunflowers in our county that needed pollinating, so we had more bees this year. Okay, we'll take a quick look at our agricultural diversity. Our crop picture there continues to be dominated by fruit and nut crops, primarily wine grapes and pears. Field crops, livestock, and livestock products account for about a third of our production. And then you can see there in the red, vegetable crops make up about 8% of our production, and this past year in 2016, that was primarily tomatoes. The remainder is made up of nursery stock, aquaculture, seed crops, and apiary. So we'll take just a brief look at some of the agricultural issues here in Sacramento County. Many of the challenges facing agriculture in Sacramento County are the same as those facing growers throughout the state. Immigrant workers, farmworkers in California, they're getting older, and they're not being replaced. A Pew Research study showed that the net flow across the U.S.-Mexico border reversed in 2005, and that trend accelerated through 2014. And the native-born Americans aren't really interested in this job, even at the wages that have soared to higher-than-average prices. Agricultural technology is trying to address the problem with more mechanization of both the growing and the harvesting of crops, but this often requires changes in the patterns of growing and also in the varieties of crops, so it doesn't happen really quickly. The California Water Fix, okay, this has been on my list and continues to be on my list. It seems to be on the downward spiral right now with the decision recently by the largest irrigation district in the state to not participate in the project to put the two tunnels under the delta. But according to the Chico Enterprise Record, the financing of the project has been so fluid that this may not be a fatal blow, so we will continue our vigilance on this topic. Also, what you're pretty much always going to see on this list, continued pressure on agricultural lands from development. As the economy recovers and building resumes, these pressures will continue to increase, so I'm sure you're going to continue to see this on our list. Ground and surface water regulations, along with the regulation of agricultural nutrients, it's meant to protect our precious water supply, but if they're not constructed using common sense, they will cripple our agricultural commodity that is already struggling under their heavy regulatory burden. And that's coming from me, and I'm a regulator. So take that where it comes from. The issue of WOTUS, which is Waters of the U.S., began in 1972 with the passage of the Clean Water Act, and it continues today. Most recently, President Trump issued an executive order revising or rescinding the 2015 rule, but until they get a new rule promulgated, growers are stuck with trying to interpret a federal court decision to know whether a federal permit is required on their land. So the saga of WOTUS continues. As you can see, being a farmer doesn't just mean sticking a seed in the ground and putting water on it. There's a lot more to it than that. Our department continues to take our charge of protecting California agriculture very seriously. We use some of the most effective resources that continue to keep out exotic invasive pests that could devast- pests that could devastate our agricultural industry. Due to the huge success of our detection dog team in intercepting invasive pests at the U.S. Postal Center there in West Sacramento, we were awarded additional funding in the farm bill that allowed us to add a second detection dog team to our toolbox. We now have both Jennifer and Dozer there on the left, and Mariah and Cairo on the right, working to keep out destructive pests. In 2016, they sniffed out 126 shipments that contained invasive harmful pests. And not to be outdone, are actually, our human inspectors are still doing a good job, and they continue to work diligently inspecting our high-risk pathways. These numbers indicate the number of shipments and the number of interceptions of invasive pests in those shipments. As we have witnessed from our Japanese beetle infestations, just the establishment of a small population of one of these pests that we intercepted could result in eradication costs in the millions, as well as the inconvenience and stress on our residents to eradicate these pests, and quarantines that could negatively impact our businesses. And, and that's only the eradication project. We're not even talking about if they were to become established, the millions that it would cost, and the additional toxic pesticides that would be used in our environment to try to control these pests if they actually were to get established. So, this is a very, we take this very seriously, very important part of our job, our duties.
Julie, before you leave that, so, so the numbers on one side is the pests detected, and then the other, the...
No, the first one is the number of shipments that they looked at, like in air freight, they looked at 199 shipments, and 45 of them, they detected pests, invasive pests.
Okay. And if I could just ask you two then, on the, in 2016, where they sniffed out, you know, in 126 different instances, shipments that contained invasive pests, where were those, those coming from other states, that came from out of the, out of the country, or where?
Both.
Both?
Both. Florida is a huge, we get a lot from Florida. But we also get a lot from Guam and Puerto Rico, a lot of other countries. And the ones where, the ones that are actually most likely to carry pests are the non-commercial shipments. So, it's a, you know, part of the family has moved here, and they're missing the foods that mama used to make, and so, and they can't find some of the things here to continue to make those foods, and so, from home, they'll send them the produce. And unfortunately, along with it, they also send the pests that are native to that area and not here. So, yeah, both other states and other countries.
Patrick. Just a quick question. So, looking at those numbers, it looks like the air freight inspections yield a whole lot more. I mean, it's 25%. So, how's the decision made, and then you have 3,925,18 found, which is minuscule in comparison. So, how's the decision made to monitor the trucks and parcels rather than more air freight?
Well, we, we monitor as much air freight, so we pretty much are maxed out there, looking at what's coming in. So, every month, we go and collect the tags, and they're, they come under, a lot of them come under blue tags so that we can inspect them once they're delivered. Our inspectors will go out to the delivery site and look at them. So, we try to use our money where we can get the most bang for the buck. So, actually, the dogs are the best. I mean, to be perfectly honest...
So, that's my question. The most bang for the buck is my question, because air freight looks like it's a bigger bang for your buck, so...
And it's already pretty much covered. We've got it well-covered. So, that just has to do with the numbers of shipments that are coming through. That's why they're so much bigger under parcels. That's like what's coming through FedEx. So, that number is huge.
Okay. So, do you do FedEx and UPS?
Yes.
Because you said postal service facility, but you also go to, because the others...
Yes. Because the others are in our county, and our inspectors do those. Actually, the, the postal facility is in West Sacramento, in Yolo County, and, and the dogs are a, they're a regional resource. So, the majority, I will say, the majority of those packages that they're looking at in West Sacramento are actually coming to Sacramento. So, they're still protecting us. But they also go other places. They go to other counties and work. So, it is a federally-funded program, so they are a regional resource.
But there is some local funding, because a few years ago, we had, some of the severe budget cuts, we had, we put some general fund dollars in to save the one position at the time. Now, we have the two, obviously, so...
So, and that's been, that's just a, that's a wonderful program. It is a win-win. It's a great PR, plus it is just so effective. Dogs are just, our noses just don't work like that. Okay. In 2016, we exported over 160 million pounds of agricultural commodities to 67 different countries. And our largest exporter here in Sacramento County is Blue Diamond. And although all those almonds aren't grown here, they're processed, stored, and exported from here. So, we aid in the process by going to Blue Diamond and inspecting both the commodity and also watching and inspecting the treatment of those commodities so that they can enter into these other countries and be exported. And we issue the phytosanitary certificates that tell the agricultural officials in those countries that they meet all the import requirements, all of their quarantine requirements. And although my report is entitled "The State of Agriculture in Sacramento County," I would be remiss if I did not mention the other important consumer protection responsibilities of our department. This slide illustrates some of the various weights and measures inspections that we perform to ensure that Sacramento consumers get what they're paying for. So, we test gas pumps for meter accuracy and signage requirements, as well as responding to complaints. And we check scales, ranging in size from tiny jeweler scales to the large-vehicle scales and everything in between. So, if money changes hands over that scale, we inspect it. Measuring devices such as electric, gas, or water meters, and then finally, the price verification inspections, where we check the scanners to see that they are charging the advertised shelf price. So, in 2016, we had an almost 94% compliance rate, which is, that's really good. We're well within the state norm. And this concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're going to have to excuse my voice, I'm fighting a throat issue here. Is there a reason, Julie, why the report doesn't include any information about Williamson Act?
About what?
About Williamson Act contracts? How much has come out in the last year? How much has been put in the last year?
Actually, it's, that's not a, you know, the, the report that you're getting, the crop report, is required by law, it's mandated by law.
Right.
And it's not one of the things that's required, but we would be happy to include that in, in future reports.
I think it'd be helpful, because there is some information in there about land use and conversion. So, to me, it seems like it's appropriate that we have some information about where we are in terms of Williamson Act contracting and, and do it year to year.
Okay. That'd be great. Actually, historically, Agricultural Commissioner's Office has, have not been that involved in land use issues, but over time, more and more, as, as you saw on the slide, we're getting more and more pressures on ag land, and the Agricultural Commissioner's Offices are becoming more and more involved in land use issues. So, it's becoming a much more important topic within our department, so we'd be happy to include that.
Yeah, and I would just, you know, concur, and I think it might be good, as part of the report, to, you know, certainly a scaled-sized map of the county, but to show, I mean, we have acres that are identified certainly as, you know, lands of statewide importance, we have prime agricultural lands, you have those that are unique to the county and rangeland. And so, I think, you know, you can portray that certainly in a graph chart, but there might be a way to, again, you did a very nice job on the report itself, but I, I would concur, that's probably a good, even though it may not be under, totally under your responsibility, working with planning department.
We can do that. We can do that.
All right. Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, and just to clarify, you know, I'd be, beyond Williamson Act, but also, you know, I mean, what's the net loss of agricultural land over the years? And I think that would be really important, as, as we make land use decisions up here, to have that, whether that's in your purview or we have to find somewhere else. Like, I think that's important information. And I just wanted to say, you know, this is one of my favorite reports every year, and this...
Thank you.
Of the, the three years that I've been here, this is by far the best. This is really good.
We're working on it. It was a big step up this year, so...
It's great.
So, thank you very much.
Julie, just one other thing, and maybe you could just touch on it in 30 seconds or so, but in the report, you talk about the certified producers of farmers markets, where we see an emerging, I think, core of folks, a number of, of folks from, you know, that have moved to this community, who are starting on small plots of land, growing some ethnic varieties of vegetables and so forth. And so, you might be just, touch for a moment, because we work closely, and I know the ride-along I did a few years ago, that some of, not just the strawberry farmers, but now with some of your winter vegetables, as well as some of your leafy greens and so forth. So, maybe just real quickly, touch on that.
Well, we do, actually, this is the first year, I'm not exactly sure why, but they didn't include the list of our farmers markets. We normally include it in our crop report, and we do have a list available on our website, and we pass them out at the Farm-to-Fork Festival. The farmers markets continue to be not only very popular with the public, but they continue to offer an outlet for some of the more unusual or exotic, as we were saying, people can't find some of the things that, if they come from other countries, they can't find some of the vegetables that they need to create, some of the dishes that they enjoy. Well, actually, some of the farmers markets are a good place to get those. You can't find them in the normal grocery store quite often, but the farmers markets is actually a pretty good source for some of those materials, and certainly a much better source than having mom or dad back home send them to you. We would appreciate you going to the farmers market rather than sending them through the mail.
Okay. One other quick question then. So, what about our Agricultural Advisor Committee? Because I know that that was, it was, been on the back burner for a long time as part of our general plan.
It's not on the back burner anymore, and you should be getting, I don't know if it's on your agenda yet, on, but it is, within the next couple of meetings, you'll have it on your agenda. So, we have a, we have a full slate, and we're ready to go.
Okay. Very good. Thanks for that. Okay. If there's no other questions, I did have one speaker then. Thank you, Julie, and thanks to all your staff for their good work, but certainly for in production of the report. Mr. Bird, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Julie. And thank you for the goodies. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning. I'll have you know you just took the starch out of my presentation with those numbers.
It's all right. You can repeat it.
Mr. Chair, Board of Supervisors, some of you I've met, some I haven't. My name is Bill Bird. I am Executive Director of the Sacramento County Farm Bureau. I'm, I'm a bit surprised by these numbers. I was expecting these numbers to be down, because we have been going through a drought, and our growers do face a number of challenges. The fact that the price for wine grapes has gone up has obviously helped the bottom line when it comes to agriculture. But one thing that I did find troubling in my notes is that while we do have an overall increase in overall production and prices, I find troubling that we have production down in some key areas. Now, this could be due, that we've gone through five years of drought, and it'll be very interesting to see what the 2017 numbers look like next year. But I just wanted to continue to stress that it's not just drought that is affecting our growers in Sacramento County. Our farmers are forced to pay the highest labor cost in this country, the high minimum wage, coupled with very expensive workers' compensation insurance, liability insurance, healthcare benefits, costs our growers millions of dollars, and these are things that growers in other states don't have to pay. Now, I understand that none of this came from the county. A lot of it is coming from the state level. In fact, the county seems to operate with a do-no-harm-to-agriculture philosophy, which our growers appreciate very much. At the same time, counties can also be effective voices for change. After two years, or, excuse me, 20 years of working in the state legislature, I can't begin to tell you how many bills that I worked with that sprang from resolutions that were introduced on the county level. So, there are things that you can do and be very effective to help our growers in Sacramento County and across the rest of the state of California, simply by taking action to pass a resolution and hoping that that resolution, or working to get that resolution introduced in the state legislature. Thank you again.
Good. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate the work to farm barrel and certainly your members, production of crops and food and fiber in our community, so thank you so much. Okay. Had no one else signed to speak on this. Again, we thank our Agricultural Commissioner, their staff, and certainly our farmers and ranchers in this county for their production of things that grace our tables each and every day. So, this is the information item. This is up on the website, Julie, as well?
It will be this afternoon.
Okay. It'll be up this afternoon, and then...
Yeah, you, actually, you got it before the secretary. She'll get it today.
Okay. Well, good. All right. Thanks a lot. Okay. With that then, we'll move to item 48.
Okay. For item 48, Supervisor, we will need to take an oath if we have people signed up to speak. This is the Rio Linda Ride Aid and Starbucks, a general plan amendment, community plan amendment, rezone use permit, special development permit, and design review to allow for the development of 2.08 acres for properties located on the intersection of Rio Linda Boulevard and Elkhorn Boulevard in the Rio Linda Community. The environmental document is a negative declaration.
Okay. Let me ask, I don't have anybody sign up to speak, and so, if there's somebody intends to speak on this, you'll need to be sworn, so if you want to stand, if there's anybody intends to speak, and if not, we'll proceed.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Somebody going to speak on this?
We do have an applicant group here, so...
Okay. So, you're going to stand. In any event, you get called upon, so just, you know...
Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth, so help you God? If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay. And when you come to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement that I have been sworn.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Leah.
All right. Good morning, members of the board. Before I get started, I did want to point out, we have five planning items in a row here, four of which are part of a larger general plan round, where you're going to be adopting a single resolution to change the general plan for four of those. So, we do have to be careful about how we take our motions and our actions, and Krista and I have prepared to walk you through that here this morning. So, on a couple cases, we're going to have you hold off on the resolution, and then you'll adopt that resolution at the end. You will be taking action on the SEQA documents or exemptions, as the case may be, as you go along, and taking other tentative action as you go along on each item. So, I just wanted to mention that before we get started. So, the first of the items is a proposed ride aid and Starbucks in Rio Linda. The location here is at the northeast corner of Rio Linda Boulevard and Elkhorn Boulevard in the Rio Linda Community. The proposal is to build a ride aid and a Starbucks on a little over two acres. It does include a general plan amendment that you would be acting upon today, and then you would be deferring, taking tentative action and deferring the actions on the community plan amendment rezone use permit, special development permit, and design review, but we will go through all of those today. So, the project site is here, shown on an aerial, again, at the northeast corner. It's currently, has a, well, let's see. In addition to the area shown in the red strikeout, I did want to note that the applicants have also purchased the single-family residential home that fronts on Lilac Lane and is located right here. So, it's not part of the proposal, but they do now own that single-family home, because that was a part of discussions about whether there would be impacts to that single-family residence there. Here are the entitlements. The use permit is to allow amplified noise associated with the Starbucks drive-through speaker within 300 feet of the residential zone. Special development permit relates to deviations from setback standards, and then there's design review. This slide is fairly detailed, but it does go through what each of the special development permit items are. On the left are the ones related to ride aid, reducing a side street yard on Lilac Lane. The trash enclosures will be up against that residential property that they now own and control. The loading dock will also be up against that residential property that they now own. There is a reduced driveline distance from the public street on Lilac Lane. The parking is slightly below minimum, but we do have some alternate horse parking that I'm going to talk about in a little bit. There is, they're eliminating the seven-foot-wide landscape screen planter adjacent to that residential parcel behind the trash closure that they now own, and we are asking for a taller sound wall in order to deal with those potential impacts. The Starbucks also has a reduced setback from single-family, a couple of sites of which they do not own, but we have not heard any comments on that. They have a shared trash enclosure area, a reduced distance from the drive-up window to the residential zoning, reduce, a reduced minimum landscape planter, and also the eight-foot sound wall. So, here's the site plan. And again, this is the proposed ride aid here. This is the Starbucks. The Starbucks drive-through, you'll place your order here, and then you'll go through the... the drive-through to do your pickup. This is the property that they've now acquired. This is the loading dock area. This is the trash area. The area will, where you get your prescriptions when you drive through, when you're sick and you don't want to go in the store and share all your germs with everyone, is right here. You'll come in off of Lilac Lane and go into the drive-through right here. One of the very unique features that the community wanted, that the applicants have been very much willing to accommodate, is at this corner right here, they're going to install a horse hitching post. Rio Linda still does have, very close by, a number of horse properties. The corner adjacent to the parking lot will be fenced off with split rail, and the hitching post will be behind the split rail fence. So that's one very unique feature that the media has picked up on and is very unique to the site. But it is a unique community, so that's appropriate. The other thing we're very appreciative of is the applicants have been willing to set aside an area right here, out at the corner of Rio Linda and Elkhorn, for the potential future installation of a community interest sign that would have to be designed and funded by the county. So we don't have that design done, but they have been willing to reserve that location, and we're extremely appreciative of that. That's something that was very important to the community, so I wanted to point out where that was on the site plan. This is some site detail having to do with the horse hitching area at that northwest corner. Basically, the guard rail to prevent the horses from going into the parking area and drive area would be here, and the hitching post would be here. And then this is the wall design, the sound wall design. It does have a beveled cap and has posts, and so it has been reviewed for its design This is the landscape plan. These are the elevations. Those were the elevations for the Rite Aid, and these are the elevations for the Starbucks. Some of the key points are, this is a major intersection within the community. It's across a street from another large grocery store complex. The site currently includes a church, three single-family homes, and three vacant parcels. The project has been supported by the community, and the design does incorporate items requested by the CPAC, including the larger wall, the location for the, a potential future county-installed sign, and a horse hitching area. The CPAC did recommend approval back in October of 2016. Four members of the public did come with some questions. They weren't necessarily opposition, and they had questions about how access would happen on Lilac Lane, how the whole road improvements were going to happen with the, there is a subdivision that's been approved on the north side of Lilac, so they had questions about how that was all going to come together, support for the sign and the horse hitching post. So the CPAC recommended approval. We've incorporated all of their recommendations into this project. Other than the last item, the landscaping that is conditioned to be installed meets county standards, but we haven't necessarily, we have not asked them to install larger upfront landscaping. In a lot of cases, we find that installing the trees at the specified size works well, because then the tree grows into its site and actually can do better over time.
Supervisor, sir? Excuse me, Leanne.
Yes.
I wasn't sure how much more you had to go, but when it comes to the horse hitching post, will there be any signage indicating or demanding that the horse owners are responsible for cleaning up after their horse?
I don't think we have that as a condition, but we could certainly speak to the applicant about that. It is a DG area rather than a lawn area. Obviously, presumably, the horses would, you know...
Do what horses do.
Do what horses do, and mess up lawn, you know, might end up being all gouged. So they installed DG. I'm not sure that I know what the cleanup...
Might be worth thinking about.
Yeah, okay. Again, we will be coming back with conditions, so that's something we could easily incorporate into the final conditions if appropriate, since we're not acting on that component today. The Planning Commission also heard this, and one of the discussions was the fact that the applicant has now purchased 416 Lilac Lane, because there were some questions about how that would work with the trash up against that. They amended the Condition 8, and this is in your board report, with regard to limiting the garbage collection hours. They amended Condition 10, allowing the Starbucks to close their drive-through at 10:00 PM, a little bit later than the 8:00 PM version of the condition. They added Condition 62 regarding a detailed lighting plan, and then, actually, not on this slide, but we have Condition 63 that has to do with the future community interest sign. So you'll see those, those will be in your final materials that we would adopt at the next meeting. So the recommendation today is that you determine that the environmental analysis is adequate and complete, adopt the negative declaration, adopt the MMRP. We'll have you hold off till the end of these sequential items to adopt the general plan amendment, and actually, we'd have you take tentative action on the community plan amendment rezone use permit, special development permit, and design review, and you can actually go ahead and take that tentative action at the end of this item and not wait on that.
Okay. All right, thanks, Leanne. Let me ask, board members, any questions? And then we'll take comments from the applicant, so.
I don't have any questions, but when the time comes, I'm prepared to move...
Okay.
...approval of the community plan amendment.
All righty. Okay, let's go to our applicant then. If there's no questions for Leanne, the applicant wish to make any comments? Presentation?
Yes, good morning, and thank you for your time. My name is Randall Smith. Kirk is my middle name. I live at 1916 Park Oak Drive in Roseville, longtime resident of Sacramento County as Leanne Moffett did a great job of presenting the project. She covered a whole lot of the items that I would want to cover, but as I think that she's mentioned today and also in the package, there has not been any community opposition to this project. We had several community council meetings, and people showed up to hear some details. But after each of our meetings, at the community council and the planning commission, we got unanimous approvals from people. And I think that's, I'm going to keep it brief, but I think it's really for two reasons. First off is the tenants. There literally is not any drugstore of any type, not even a local pharmacist, within three miles. There's one about four miles to the east on Watt, one about three miles to the south at Norwood, and one about three and a half miles to the southwest in Natomas. But not even a local pharmacy is closer than that. And more surprising, there also isn't a Starbucks or a similar coffee shop within that distance, and that's amazing. So the community really wants these services, so that's number one. Number two is that this intersection is severely underimproved, and there's been several applicants who have tried to come in and develop this property over the last 15 years. But because of the amount of improvements required on three street frontages, once they get through the full analysis of their project, they've determined that it just isn't feasible, so they've fallen aside. But together with the Rite Aid and the Starbucks, we've been able to make this pencil, but just barely. But it does work, we're ready to go, and we're hoping that we can build a very nice project here for you.
Okay, thanks, Randall. Any questions, Mr. Smith? Okay, very good. Thanks for being here this morning, for your comments. Any other member of your team wish to speak? Okay. All right, and would note that Mr. Smith had been sworn as well. Yeah, okay. All right, so bring it back to you, Leanne. Supervisor Frost is prepared to make a motion. Anything else you need to add? Bless you.
No, I just want to clarify the actions we would be asking you to take. Determine that the environmental analysis is adequate and complete, and adopt the negative declaration, adopt the MMRP, take tentative action on the community plan amendment and the remainder of the items, and defer all of those until October 31st. So that would be our requested actions right now.
Okay, that's motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moving to second then to take the actions outlined by the planning director, and if there's nothing further, I had no one signed up to speak, and I wish to address this item before we act on it? All right, seeing none, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right, very good. Next item, related item.
Next item is item 49. This is also the Rite Aid, this is also the Rite Aid store. This is the ABC license hearing to determine whether public convenience would be served by issuance of a Type 21 liquor license to Rite Aid located at the corner of Rio Linda Boulevard and Elkhorn Boulevard in the Rio Linda, Elverta community.
May I ask Mr. Smith for this one, in case? Anyway, okay. All right, Leanne.
All right, so I have a very brief PowerPoint on this. I won't belabor a lot of the slides. We've already looked at the location. We've already looked at the site plan in detail. So the key points here is they are looking for a Type 21 liquor license. The area is both high crime and over-concentrated, but there is a desire to have the liquor license so that the Rite Aid can be a full-service, typical Rite Aid kind of store. The store hours will be 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, but the sale of alcohol, as we do with most of these actions, will be cut off at 10:00 PM. We have the no single sales and the standard condition about the size of alcohol. And the CPAC did recommend approval on a 5 to 0 vote, and the CPAC members were satisfied with the security and lighting conditions.
Okay, thank you, Leanne.
Yeah.
All right, this is a public hearing on the findings for public convenience for the off-sale of, actually, a full liquor license for this, so. But ask if the applicant wants to make any comments about this, and then, all right, so we have no one coming forward, and I have no one signed up to speak. Is there any member of the public wish to address this? I'll declare a public hearing open on this. All right. Seeing no one coming forward then, bring it back to board. Leanne, you've got the recommended conditions. Supervisor Frost, did you want to?
Yeah, so in this case, we would be asking you to make the finding, yeah.
Okay. All right, so it's moving second to make the finding to support the finding of public convenience with conditions as noted that will be forwarded to the ABC. All right, anything further, then, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, next item.
Item 50 is the general plan cleanup package, request for a general plan amendment.
So the next item is really, corrects a large number of very small items in the general plan, typically typographic errors, new organizational names throughout the county, some unassigned or reassigned implementation measures, and some changes to figures due to the annexation of full sum. I do have a PowerPoint that pretty much says just that, so.
Okay.
If there are no questions, we could probably forego that.
All right, summarize that. We have the packet before us. Any member of the board want to ask any questions about this item? All right, seeing none. I have no one signed up.
Move it.
Okay.
So we would have you recognize the exemption, and you're going to hold off on the resolution.
Okay, that's the motion.
I agree to that.
Okay, that's, motion has been seconded. I have no one signed up to speak. Anyone wish to address this item? All right, seeing none then, it's moving seconded. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. All right, next item.
All right, the next item, as time has gone by, we discovered in the land use diagram four sites, which when we were updating the plan, at one point in time, we had contemplated either putting urban development area or urban reserve. Ultimately, we withdrew those designations and went back to the underlying general plan designations that had existed before, but for four small spots, the materials that we took forward didn't withdraw either the UDA or the urban reserve. So we just wanted to clean that up and get that correct.
All right. If you could, quickly, why don't you just show the four sites, so that for those that are watching from a distance, they can see what we're talking about.
Definitely, so if we can bring up the PowerPoint, I can go through what those are, and we have done outreach to the four property owners. So here's the vicinity map of the four. One is in the general eastern area, where we inappropriately showed it for urban development area, and it should be natural preserve.
Okay.
The next one is a Tykert-owned property that should be General Ag 80. It's a little tooth that goes down into the city of Rancho Cova, but is in the county. This one is south of Mather, should be extensive industrial, which is what it was before.
Okay.
And the final one is in Vineyard, which should be low-density residential. It's off of Elgro Florin and...
You know what's at Gerber, on McCoy?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, very good.
Move the item.
Okay, move, moving second then to prove the item.
So again, you're recognizing the exemption and holding off on the resolution.
All right, that's the motion. No one here speak to this item? Item 51? All right, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And then item, oops, sorry.
So item 52 is the general plan safety element and safety element background update, general plan amendments to the safety element and safety element background to revise outdated information related to flood hazards, seismic and geologic hazards, fire hazards, and emergency response. The environmental document is exempt.
So in this case, you may recall, back in 2016, we brought forward a package of amendments specifically related to flooding in order to meet some state law changes. At that point in time, when your board was reviewing those changes, you realized that a number of the safety element sections, particularly the background section, had not been updated in many years. Some probably had been written 25-odd years ago, and a few things had changed in the past years. So staff took a comprehensive look at the safety element and has provided you with a revised version, updating things to current standards.
If I recall, Leanne, on this one, there was, we had some discussion about the languages related to areas that could be impacted by flooding, and some of the language that was kind of cut and paced at a time, did that?
Yes.
Could you just point that?
So we've updated the figures, we've updated the text. So if you look at Exhibit B of the resolution...
Okay.
We have a clean version, and Exhibit C is a strikeout version. And we've gone through and just worked with water resources staff quite thoroughly. We've taken a fair amount of time to do this, and we've really reworked all those older sections.
So Exhibit C is the version that's being proposed, is the strikeout?
Exhibit C is the clean version, and Exhibit D is the strikeout version, bold and strikeout. So you can see all the changes and...
Okay, all right. Thanks. Okay, we don't have anyone signed up to speak?
Move the item.
Chair would second it? It's moving seconded then to, again, certification on the exempt status of the document and adopt the attached resolution?
So now you're, yeah, now you're ready to adopt the resolution for all the items? So our request is to have you adopt the resolution for a general plan amendment subject to findings that are in each report.
First, we have to pull the vote up on this one.
I'm sorry, oh. Unanimous vote.
Very good, thanks. All right, so now you need an all-encompassing vote, is what you're saying?
No, I think you, oh, is that what you just did?
Yeah, we just voted on 50.
Yes.
52, 52 included all that?
That's what I understood. Didn't you read?
I thought you had to go back to another one.
Sorry, I thought you had recognized the exempt status, took a vote on that, and then now you need to adopt the resolution for a general plan amendment.
Right, okay. So that's the motion, okay. All right, do we have a motion then, adopt the resolution?
Move.
Move, can move second. Can move second then. All right, anyone wish to speak to that? Action? Seeing none, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, moved through a lot of paper very quickly, Ms. Moffett. Very good. Okay, takes us through the morning agenda. We do have some off-agenda speakers though, so I would call them in order they were turned in. I have David Warren. David, you have a letter I think you want to present, or maybe give it to the clerk that's been distributed, Mr. Warren. Rules do allow for five minutes for non-agenda items, so, David. And then I have Martha Ash following, Mr. Warren. Good morning, David.
Two months ago, I brought to your attention an issue concerning emergency medical transportation in Sacramento County. When I was here, the chair indicated that perhaps within the four to six weeks, I would hear from the county concerning scheduling this item on the agenda. When that didn't happen, I wrote to Mr. Gill asking about the status. You have a copy of that letter. I didn't receive a response. Ordinarily, patience would be worthwhile, but in this instance, it can't. On Saturday, I had to transport my wife in my car to UC Davis Medical Center because she had a heart attack, because Metro Fire would not transport her to UC Davis. It was necessary that you go to UC Davis because of her medical history, which is unique, and, but for the fact that her medical records and past test records were there, she would have died. It cannot be reasonable, after two months, that this matter cannot come before the board. I can't be the only person that has this problem. I have given my service to the... I have given my service to this country. I have served as an attorney representing those people whom no one would want to defend, people who are accused of murder, and I have volunteered, and my wife has volunteered, provide Jewish services to CDCR inmates where no Jewish chaplain can be available. I'm not asking much. You may not agree with my proposal, but at least I deserve to have this matter scheduled. There are a lot of seniors such as myself who require unique and special medical attention, which requires complete medical records. Had my wife been in a metro ambulance in transit, she could have received her IV medication, which was immediately given to her on arrival at UC Davis. Even though I live two miles from Mercy Hospital, none of my wife's medical records, very special medical records, were available to that hospital, and would have taken more time for them to determine what action to take than the time from when I walked into the front door of UC Davis Medical Center to the time four minutes later when her IV began. Now, I recognize you have many issues. There's budget, there's people who want to develop, there are employment, and God bless the volunteers, but life safety issues have got to be one of the most important things you have to address. Now, the Metro Fire Department has no reason and will gladly transport anyone from Citrus Heights to UC Davis. The only thing that prevents them from doing so is the committee that this county has established. Private ambulances will not transport from Citrus Heights to UC Davis because of the protocol which your committee has established and which could result in the suspension or termination of a paramedic's license. It is unconscionable that there cannot be an exception for individuals with extraordinary or very unusual medical conditions to be transported to a hospital that can treat them. Now, I don't mean to be threatening, but my life, my wife's life, is irreplaceable, and, excuse me, and I cannot understand why the five of you cannot get the county administrator to set this on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Ms. Gill, you have a copy of the letter, and I know there's...
I just received a copy, and I am embarrassed to say this is the first time I've seen this. We have referred this to DHHS, they've been looking at it. I'll follow up immediately what the status is. The request, as Mr. Warren has indicated from last time, was to see what policy changes we need to make and report back, and I'll follow up on this.
Okay, you think it's possible, then, assuming it's appropriate to have it agendized? Again, we have a committee that reviews, obviously, ambulance protocol in this county.
Absolutely, we will, we will meet with Mr. Warren and come back to you as quickly as possible. I think as he's indicated, there's some policies that I believe the recommendation is not to change, but I've asked to find out what was the rationale behind it. I've not heard that, but I will report back to the board on that.
Within what time period?
I would like to get it done by first meeting in October.
Okay.
So that's October 17th, right?
October 17th will be our, so we're going to take the next couple of weeks, and again, recognizing, obviously, there's, you know, fragile lives at stake here, and so we're going to do our best to get it back before it's October 17th, will be our first meeting in October, so.
And we'll communicate...
But in the meantime, David, we'll have Mr. Gill in his office communicate with you, and then we'll work to get it on the agenda for some consideration, whatever that may be. I mean, we don't have, from the last time you were here, we don't have any report back yet, and obviously, people have been looking at it, but I understand urgency, obviously, for both you and your wife, and maybe others that are in the same circumstance, so let us see if we can get this back to us pretty quickly.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, David. Okay, then, with that, we have Martha Ash. Martha, I'll just say, as Martha comes forward, I know that she spoke with a member of my staff and left communication that she may be sharing with us today. I've informed Mr. Gill about this, and I don't know where any position to. So if you'll identify yourself, Martha, and I'll yield to you five minutes as well, so...
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for hearing me, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your good service. I believe, well, Mr. Natoli, you know I've been coming to you for seven years now with these same issues. Ms. Peters, you recommended to the board in 2012, July of 2012, when I stood right here and asked you and the Board of Supervisors at that time, which were a few other people, different people at that time, I asked you if you would please look into the vacancies that were dropping like flies off of the Lock Management Association Board and Lock Foundation Board in the Town of Lock, where I reside and where I have been sued by this, the public agency that includes, according to the bylaws, a chair seat for the Board of, to represent the Sacramento County, as well as a board seat to represent state parks, and three, suspectly, in my opinion, discriminatorily seated chair seats for representatives of Chinese associations. How can that exist on a public board? That there's a specified race? The residential population of only about 40 or 50 people in Lock, in the Town of Lock and then is Lock South, has approximately 75 people of Hispanic origin. The Town of Lock itself has approximately 85% population of Hispanic origin. Why is there not a board seat, or three board seats, or six board seats for people of Hispanic origin? Or what about, what about any other origin? In other words, what I'm saying is, a public board should not have a specification for race. Okay, I am, I am here today to pay you about $5,500 or so in assessments that I have recently been charged by these people who took, stole my property title of my $21,000 art gallery that I invested another $80,000 into repairs over the last five years with your county-approved building permits, including wheelchair access and a main street door to allow wheelchair access. Last week, these self-elected, since 2009, Board of Directors, who are all financially tied to one another, and this is not the first time you've heard me tell you this, took it upon themselves and got three or four of their friends to walk past my ice cream parlor with chainsaws, radial arm saws, sledgehammers, without any public hearing, without any approval of the 38 owners of the property now that was taken away from me and determined to be common ground, and they removed a historic foundation that used to be a neighboring property but was within the parcel. I've got, I don't know if you can shine this on here.
It's up.
And anyway, okay, it shows right there in your special planning area document that that property that was taken away from me is commercial residential. That's why you folks, or the folks downstairs, issued me a business license for my art gallery. These self-elected, crony-appointed Board of Directors, who are my next-door neighbors and who act like a bully gang against me and other people, but especially me, in the town, fought my building, fought my assessments for the first four months that I tried to pay them, my commercial rate assessments, when I owned the building back in 2011, and recently, now that they've got the title, they took me to small claims court and said that I owe them assessments and that even though they protested my assessment payments initially, telling me I was not the rightful owner of that property. Small claims court judge determined that, with no explanation, that yes, I have to pay the assessments. So since I don't believe that any of those so-called board members who are left, seven of a 13-member board, eight of them have jumped ship, the seven who are left are all the next-door neighbors of mine who claim to be legally elected even though they were not, and they held a sham election in March of 2017 for only two of the six property owner-seat board elections, and they, they held up the private ballots, one at a time, for the news camera, it's on YouTube, and counted the ballots themselves. They did not have a third party...
Martha, I need you to conclude.
I'm sorry.
Because I know you were here for a particular purpose today.
Yes, my purposes, and did you all receive my letter I gave to the clerk yesterday?
I sent the county executive.
This is my reasons in protest, why I'm protesting these payments, but I wish to give them to you because I don't feel there's one legal member left, so, and you folks are the parent of this organization.
Yeah, and I don't know that we can receive those. I know that we talked about this last year when the issue came up, so the county council's here...
I've had them made out to the Lock Management Association, but in protest with the accompanying letter.
Hold on, she has a letter, so, yeah.
Robin just provided me a copy of a letter that June Powell's Mays wrote to Martha Ash, May 17th of 2017, returning the assessment check because the county is not authorized to accept the check pursuant to the Lock Management Association bylaws and CCNRs, such assessments must be paid to the Lock Management Association and not the county.
Okay.
I wrote that check out in May to the Board of Supervisors. This check is made out to Lock Management Association, but I believe there is no Lock Management Association since they are not legally elected.
Let me offer this, because again, certainly, in going back a number of years, but I've talked with the county executive, and I've indicated you in the past, and I've spoken with county council's office as well, as it relates to membership and vacancies and, you know, certainly some of the questions that you've raised, but others may see it differently, but I think there's an important role the county had in obviously establishing this under the, at the time when we actually married the land back up with the buildings and took a number of other actions, you know, a number of years ago. And so I've asked the county executive, and I don't know now if you want to weigh in, I shared this with you about bringing, I think, a fuller discussion, not necessarily specific to all of Martha's issues, because they're, you know, some of these are, you know, specific between landowners and, and obviously, the association as its current construct is, but to actually have this board have, via county council and county executive's office, some recommendations as to, you know, how we might address the vacancies, because we do have some appointment authority as it relates to those, but certainly, there are other things that are laid out in the charter that allow them to, you know, function once they were created, and so I don't know if you've had a chance to...
So since we had the last discussion on Monday, I've not had a chance to sit down with county council, go over all the options, but what I am thinking about with input from county council will be bring this item on the agenda, to have the board have a discussion on the appointments and other outstanding issues that have existed. We're looking at sometime, most likely in November, to bring that back to you.
Okay, all right, so that would be, I noticed out of our agenda, Martha, but today, I don't believe, and county council, certainly Krista weighing in, that, understanding certainly your concerns and your wish to, you know, pay the assessments under protest, but for us to receive those, I don't believe that's appropriate unless someone else gives me that guidance, and so, but we do intend in the next few weeks to, working with county council and county executive, to actually have an item, we'll notify the appropriate parties, and I'm sure we'll have a number of folks, yourself included, here to talk about some of the issues that you've raised over a number of years now.
May I have 30 more seconds of your time?
Okay, 30 more seconds, then we're going to do it.
Thank you. I just want you to see that last, last week, their, the Lock Management Association's lawyers sent me a billing for post-judgment charges of 25 pages of redacted names of emails that they have to read, most likely from my very next-door neighbors who claim to be the secretary and chairman of this board, and their treasurer, who is actually their tenant. $83,000 more they want from me, just in the last eight months, post-judgment charges, at the rates of $350 an hour and $240 an hour for lawyers to talk to each other about reading my next-door neighbor's emails. I'm sorry, you guys need to intervene, and they've leased my properties, they're going to take everything I own.
All right, you can leave that information with us, and again, we will bring this back to the board. So if you want to leave copies of those documents, or certainly even my office later today, Martha, we'll get them to the right folks, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, then that's all the off agenda speakers for this morning session. We'll be back in session then at, we have a closed session, then we'll be back in public session at 2:00, so.
We're going to have a closed session right now?
Yes, we'll go to a closed session right now.